So you go up to where the life for sure.
I maybe did.
Turn around.
Texting across the valley.
That one time to all treat other than small version.
They can fix it, right? The temperature.
Well, somebody just kept it up.
Seventy-five.
Hey, I didn't press voted.
It's seventy-five.
And we have them coming back out. So they did the initial, they fixed back here, which was the garage. So that's been open to, but you can't turn up here. Can't, it's not even pulling from down below now. So we needed these systems in the same, they're gonna be back out, I believe, around the middle of the month. And that's when we also had all this resolved. Cause they also have a look at our building as well. Uh, the filters need to be replaced and a couple of things. Yeah, it's been long.
Big. Give us much.
It's true. It's our sign.
Let's do the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Here.
Here. All right, first, we'll make the motion to appoint Richard Howlett as the temporary chair.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call. Okay, Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Victor, you agree?
Thanks, sir. I would like to entertain a motion to nominate Chairman of the Supervisors for twenty twenty five, so.
I'll make a motion to Chris Smith as chairman.
Discussion on that motion. I think, fellows, it's time for a change in the chair.
Oh, you want control.
You don't let me finish.
Sure.
I think it's time for a change. That's not necessarily a disrespect for Mr. Smith. But with his appearance on the sewer authority, the environmental agency council, he's had a long tenure, and I ask you to withdraw that motion.
Anybody else have any discussions? Any next comment? Comments or anything?
No.
Change is a good thing.
Do what you suggest.
Me?
Yeah, no.
I'll be glad to do it.
Yeah, okay. And I'll be glad to roll over and die here and now.
I guess I'd be a no vote then, Mr. Brian Stein.
Absolutely.
One of my other three more reasonable colleagues. Let's give someone a chance.
No, let's let you manipulate. That's all you're up to. You just wanna play your games.
Let's give somebody else a chance.
I'm like, you suck it up and move on. The discussion was made, move on and get over yourself.
The discussion is ongoing.
No, it's only in your world.
I'd ask Mr. Smith, please, gentlemen, withdraw.
Christopher, how many go away?
Looks like there's a question.
Of course, you guys talk plenty. Go ahead, Harold.
I believe according to Robertson's order, the nominations are open and each one to nominate somebody else. And then you close the nomination and you vote, and whoever gets the most votes is the guy that gets it.
Okay.
I say that's, I think that's true.
Well, you did, you did.
What was one of the references to our solicitor coming and not coming?
Oh, get over yourself. You don't, you don't contribute when we're out of this room, where you can be seen on camera, Mr. Gittler. You've not applied for a single position in this supervisor at all, all year. You don't respond to emails. So cry me a river another day. Okay, I'm tired of you making the scene.
My question was, who's on top of our solicitor? Is she coming? Is she not coming? What was the purpose?
You got the last email if you could read.
There was an email.
Our solicitor reached out to us and referenced coming to the meeting and what time she should be here and.
Our solicitors have never come to the meeting.
That's the point.
Dr. Smith reached out to me, but I mean, they'd never come to the meeting. I then informed her of that. Some supervisors, some townships do like their solicitor to be there. Uh, I think she had made that assumption. I then told her essentially that she did not need to be here, and she made the decision to be in a location seating, cause a couple of places I'd asked her to be.
You would think a prudent solicitor or prudent person would make some of those decisions before forty-eight hours. Does that sound a bit logical, Mr. Rhodes? I mean, do you, do you, do you think?
Yeah, I'm waiting until the last minute. It's not logical.
Is the right way to do it? Okay, so I'm asking Mr. Smith to step aside and voluntarily not sue the chair.
So are we, are we gonna take nominations? And then do whatever.
I disagree with Harold. Do we have that? Are we sure that?
I mean, that's, he's right. That's how we did it last year. We did.
Well, that's what it's supposed to be done, right?
Yeah, we took nominations.
And do you think to call for any more nominations? If you get no more, then you vote on what you got.
So I would, as a temporary chair, call for there are any more nominations.
Why not nominate me, though? I'll nominate myself.
That sounds pleasant.
Okay, Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith voted for himself last time. Well, right, so I'll nominate myself too, I guess.
That's your prerogative. That doesn't mean it's the right thing to do.
Two, right now. Anybody else?
So I'm volunteering, Mr. Brian Stein, to be the chair.
No, you're volunteering for control, Bittler. Don't play your game.
Well, control what I have in this board. Seriously.
I have no faith in you.
Well, control, well, this is, this is what happens, folks, when you have someone that's essentially selected and not elected to the board. This is the outcome.
Right, because I don't kiss up and you do. So.
Someone who loses the election and gets appointed. This is the problem. This is, this is the problem, gentlemen.
Yeah, okay, whatever, Bittler. Get back to the problem, which is you wanna be chairman.
You appointed someone who lost the election.
Yeah, and I beat him. No, 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 no. I beat Harold in the general election, Mr. Bittler. As a Democrat, so get over yourself.
I don't think so.
Go back and look at the numbers.
We have two nominations on the board. Let's have a discussion. We should take this to a vote. All those, uh, I'll try to phrase this. Uh, those who are in favor of Supervisor Smith assuming the chair of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Smith? Should we write down the list?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
No.
Ms. Brian Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Gallow?
Yes.
Shrews?
Yeah.
Dr. Smith, you will be the chair.
All right, you'd like to make a motion for vice chairman?
Yeah, I hate Jeff.
I don't want to do the same thing. Any other nominations for vice chairman?
Sure. Did you nominate him yet, or?
I'll nominate Mr. Bittler.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any other nominations? Anyone for, do Rose first for vice chair. We'll do Mrs. Joy. Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Hello?
Yes.
Now, is this the first motion or the first nomination, if you will? I did not hear that entirely, what you said.
Well, this would mean to pick, because, you know, we've got two people. I was doing him first since he was nominated first.
Well, he nominated me.
That's fine. He can get to you. He can.
But then, if it would have been a, no, 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 then it would have been.
He nominated me, and he's about to vote now. Is that what you're saying?
This is the next round.
Well, abstain. It's up to him to be abstained.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Like, I'd probably abstain, but.
Ah, abstain. That's all right. Abstain.
Why you vote no then?
Right, I vote yes. So we have three to do. And I would like to make a motion to appoint Richard Howlett as the Deputy Robinson Township Manager.
I'll make a motion.
We have seconds. I'll second.
Let's have a discussion on that. We, we had agreed to have a job review that really hasn't occurred. This board has established set qualifications for the manager, which he does not need. Later in the agenda, there's a sizable salary increase, all of which is not in the best interest of the taxpayer. I don't understand how this board can do such a thing.
Yeah, we know. Abstain is not one of your better qualities.
It's Darrell with its duty to the taxpaying residents.
It's annoying and whining, you know? You need to just get off your wine and cheese and stop. Work with the rest of us.
Motion in a second.
Second one.
So, so how do we do a job discussion?
Yeah.
How did we do a job review? How do you justify this?
Well, I had a question for this. I was asked a bunch of questions. And we, we're, I don't know what the date is. I have to look back at emails.
You don't read. You don't care.
Yeah, he sent, he'll, he sent the performance evaluations for when we were in Dusso Ridge, and I had my help, and we were discussing upon some point. Have you ever thought of yours?
The, the performance evaluation? No. No, what I'm waiting for is discussion with us on personnel.
And that was.
Wait, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean you send out something that you prepared yourself.
No, that was what he.
How did you circumvent as a chairman of this board? How do you circumvent the requirements for a manager? You have a danger. We have an alibi. He was hired on a temporary basis, at, which I did, among others, and, and in my opinion, has not performed and doesn't qualify. Even last year's budget, he did not educate. He, he, he didn't expend money for education. Look at the debacle that we've had. At some point, I think you'll understand, maybe. And that's not personal. That, that's, that's business. We're doing the business here of the township, and he's not qualified, and he hasn't done the job, period.
But you're not a attorney.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
We should look for another one, folks.
Well, you apparently don't agree, therefore.
Another roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yeah.
Mr. Gallow. As far as the review, really brought up, what was the, sorry, was it ten things going on at once? Was it was not done or was it going on when? Well, we can add it to executive session. It just felt, you know, that it was part of the, the jumpstart to the thing was gonna be that, that email, and then, uh. So I don't know how many things.
I mean, we, we, we need to do a year.
If you're worried about today, appoint him for one month, and then we can evaluate it then.
Yeah, we, the motion was made for two thousand twenty-five, and we got a motion in a second. Then we have a roll call, Mrs. Joyce, and she asked him for Mr. Gallow. So he asked if that was gonna be the jumpstart to this, which we can pick a date whenever we wanna do that in executive session. As long as we pick a date to do that, then I'm the yes. All right, Mr. Rhodes.
Well, it's in, it's obviously we can give a review, and yeah.
Mr. Bittler?
When would we have the date? Why don't we pick the date now?
We just don't know it.
No, no.
Get, get it set.
This is, this is no good.
Well, Chris didn't even get to vote.
I vote yes, yeah. Well, maybe we can do an executive on, not Thursday, but on maybe the regular meeting.
This month, regular, regular?
May I like to make a motion for secretary for two thousand twenty-five? Next guy, you wanna nominate somebody? You have something to give him?
If accepted, I will nominate Ms. Paula, she does such a great job.
We're talking according secretary or township secretary?
Recording.
This is the township secretary. This would be a township. Recording's a little bit further on in the agenda. Start discussion.
No, no, where's the phone?
I think that's in.
It's the assistant.
It's in the appointments. Yes, it is.
Oh, okay, never mind. Retract. You can do that, too. Anyone for somebody for township secretary?
I believe in most circumstances, your treasurer and your secretary are usually the manager who does the day-to-day operations, stamps, and signs everything in the surecase.
That's previously been the exact thing that was done.
Secretary can be anybody. It can.
It can, but.
I don't remember the word. Could be anybody.
It makes the most sense to her. Put it way, what is it?
I mean, what are you gonna do? Essentially, it tests everything. It comes to all the, all our resolutions, or, this is anything that might have to be tested too. Okay, sign this. Just sign it.
She's not tired of dealing. I can't be like running anymore.
No.
I don't have to write all the minutes off.
That's a fair statement.
I'll, I'll have to make a motion for Mr. Gallow as the secretary for two thousand twenty-five. Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Sure, I'll move this.
And I'd like to make a motion for assistant township secretary for two thousand twenty-five.
Who did that last one? Secretary is back up?
That's why it was asking.
That's why we should have.
If it wasn't Chris.
And we have more things we wanna talk about, please. That's why it all should be attached.
I'll make a motion.
No, I mean, how basic is that? How basic is that?
Well, if you would listen, he's in the middle of making a motion, but you're not listening to him.
I'll make a motion for Supervisor Rhodes to be the Assistant Township Secretary.
I'll second that. Thinking of you.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
I don't know.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion to appoint Township Secretary as the treasurer for the two thousand twenty-five.
You're gonna go with the same theory of the treasurer and the secretary were actually. The same as far as the.
That would be Scott.
No, I meant, uh, as the township manager. Because he's the one who's bonded anyway, and to have multiple people bonded for two million dollars doesn't seem really, you know. It's not fiscally responsible. I'll make the most amount of richer, how it be the secretary, yeah, the treasurer. He's already bonded and makes the most sense. And that was the way we know sort of.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
I'll vote no.
All right, and we'll make a motion for Assistant Township Secretary. Oh, and I think. Anyone want to make a motion for Assistant Township Treasurer for two thousand forty-five?
All I have to do is go over things with Rick, right? Pretty much.
Go to bank if you can.
Well, I'm real far away. I don't think I could handle that. But yeah, that's not an issue. I don't mind.
So I'm gonna choose for Joy, the Assistant Township Treasurer. I'll make that motion. Well, I made the motion. Oh, you made it? Yeah. Do you want a second? You have a second? I'll second. No one else do. All right, roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Abstain, it's okay. I'll wait.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
I'll vote no.
Oh, yes. All right, and I need a motion. We need to make a seat for chairman. Cause we have two.
We have two. Mr. Time and Ms. Katarakis. Express letters of interest.
I make a motion for Mr. Time.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion on the motion. Again, it's not a personal issue. It's time for people to.
It's always personal, Mr. Bittler.
Okay, I'd be to you, but you've served your time. Thank you. It's time to get other people. And this is another example where we're not allowing other people to be in. We don't put stuff on the website. We don't, we don't do what we should do to basics. I'm asking you as a gentleman to realize and step aside, decline nomination.
No.
Okay? I asked you as a gentleman. So it's a, it's another shame.
No, don't make your life miserable. Don't worry. That's the goal.
Any other discussion?
No.
All right, roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
I'll vote no.
Oh, yes. All right, now, we wanna do this as a poll. Can you go through one?
I believe pensions.
So all right, for Township Recording Secretary. Very happy you're gonna play football. That'll be good.
I, I, I will nominate my great Paul Collins to be the Recording Secretary. I also will put her.
Any other nominations for that? Doesn't sound like it, so.
Well, that's now ready to go for a word with that one.
And number two, the Township Open Records Officer.
I was also nominating Paula.
Well, no, the manager would be her on the track.
Oh, you're the first one?
Yeah, so. So.
Deputy Open Records Officer. You have this coming?
I'm working on it.
Believe last year we had Ms. McCann, now.
Yeah, uh, okay. That's what I was gonna ask. Basically, almost all you just get flipped around to the people in the office. Pretty much.
It was Sheila last year, or this year, or well, actually. The one was just somebody else?
Why, 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 why make the work? Why make somebody do it twice? No, I said.
Paul, Paul, did you raise your hand? She said, sure, I did say.
It's not much. I can work through this. It's, it's pretty.
I think this is called, I guess, cross-training by flipping who's deployed each time. So I guess we do cross-training in it.
All right, the Divisal Authority Open Records is the Secretary.
You got the secretary of this board, the secretary of the municipal board.
You can't, you can't do the.
According to the Oregon Executive document for the R G N A, the secretary is in fact the open records.
Yeah, this has it written.
Of the board.
Of that board, yes.
Of that board or this board?
That's it.
So, yeah, that has not been decided yet. Fisher.
It's already been decided in the creating by, correct, Al?
Well, it's created by, yeah.
So whoever is that position.
Right, so then we don't need to bless that girl.
I'm gonna have the Divisal Department Deputy Open Records Officer.
I believe you could probably appoint that, because it only talks about the Open Records Officers, not left deputy.
Maybe we can call the Nelsons to look it up.
Say you're the voter confidence.
I'm with that. We got the E A C VAs on. And it was you and it was Joy, so right now it's Joy. Right now it's Joy.
Yeah, Joy's not broken right now. Do something else you want me to do. That's not hard. Flowers and I don't do real well. We come to that conclusion. I'll provide whatever they need and I can do, but I'm not real good at that. It's only, it's only advisory. I don't see what Chris doing. It hurts it.
Which one?
The E A C. No, Chris, I think you, I think it's, it's all yours here.
All right, we got the Gaja holidays on. Last year they had no one, right?
So understand that based on the requirements for Penn best loan, this is where this comes into play. So the, you have two pieces to this. You have the Gaja, the board itself, that can be, you got two members from Robinson Township, two members from Union Township, and a third member, which is appointed by both Union and Robinson Township, which must live within the Gaja service area. So we don't currently have somebody for the Gaja board that's being currently looked at by members of the board itself. Uh, but the Penn best loan requires that a supervisor be available if there is a dispute resolution. So that fifth member I spoke of, which is the, uh, member represented, representing both of Robinson and Union Townships, and who lives in the Gaja service area, plus a member of the board supervisors of each township is supposed to sit and, and listen to any disputes and then to come to resolutions on those. So that's what that is for. So I'm not sure that that is met very often, if at all. Uh, that is a requirement of the Penn best loan is.
That, that's why we always have a supervisor on the boards.
I would probably say that would be a challenge, because then you're not really, you don't have a dispute resolution board. You have folks that are already there, they're, they're on the board. It's not really disputing anything.
There you go, Mr. Bittler. I'll nominate. You could do that.
No, thank you, Ms. Brian Stein. You, you had a good man, I think, to Mr. Steve, and we blew it.
Really?
Okay, we don't further.
You, you?
No, 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 no.
It, I don't see it happening very often.
I was just like, if somebody calls me, then I have to go.
I'll nominate Joy.
Or you would do it. That's crazy.
All right, then we have Nick from the Engineer from Park and Rec. And this year, this Craig is me, I guess, right?
No.
Okay. You want to keep that the same?
I'm the same, we didn't change it, it's just me.
Yeah, I'll nominate Craig.
Isn't that one?
And then it would be, that's your code enforcement.
Technicon.
I'm going, I'm going with them.
Yes, so long.
Technico, really?
Yeah.
And then you have the older building, the old union code enforcement officer. S D E. Everybody around that?
Who is it?
S D E. Then, of course, emergency manager quarters is for the governor. We can make a motion.
I think you have Young Brown, and currently, he does that, you point him from the governor, so I think that would continue.
All right, let's get him in there. And then deputy emergency manager quarter here.
Brody Workman.
We just put Brody.
I've made it.
Yeah, yeah, you did.
Support officer. Tried to generalize here, so. We'll keep that the same. Yeah. And S D, and S D even though it's service, S D, S D O. All right, so we have all those fifteen. And we'd like to make a motion to affirm slash reaffirm the appointment for two thousand fifteen is listed. I'll make that motion. You have a second.
I'll second.
Roll call. Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Vote no.
All right, next would be.
You vote Rhodes?
Uh, yes, I guess I put it down. Yes. Anyone like to make a motion for solicitor for the township planning commission and park and recreation board? Last year it was.
And with Mr. Orlando.
There's Orlando, uh, well, yeah.
Well, just getting. Beginning.
Beginning.
Yes. We need to change solicitors. I said it previously, system has been.
That's why.
Not good.
I know, we went through three of them. Gee, I can't understand that.
Apparently, we'd like to make a motion for. What was for the? Solicitor for that.
What other solicitors responded in request, in response to a request for the public?
You, you didn't go into it and read it?
Yeah, I may, I may ask you a question. Who responded and what was the evaluation of it?
Coslaw, Stow, and. Was that? Schnee. Jay Chadwick, Schnee.
Chadwick, Schnee.
Excellent. Excellent.
So, we didn't get enough, and there's a reason why there's no participation. Certainly a history within the township.
You've already gotten rid of two of them this year.
And it's bad. It's bad, gentlemen.
Yes, you've gotten rid of two of them for us, Mr. Bittler. You've done a great job.
Ms. Bradenstone, you, you represented to the public that Ms. London and Coslaw office never represented you personally so for a name change, yet the, the firm prepared to be. The firm prepared to be their transfer, and this got presented to the public. We named a solicitor that doesn't have entanglements and ties within the supervisor.
They've got thirty some.
It's basic. It's very basic. It's, it, it avoids the conflict. Look at the conflicts we already have.
Yeah, you're wonderful.
All right, anyone like to make a motion for solicitor for the township planning commission park and record? And I'll make a motion for Coslaw, Scott. One second.
I'll second.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Vote no.
Gallow, yes. Anyone like to make a motion for solicitor for Robinson Township zoning slash hearing board?
I was just saying, is he still doing?
He's still.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna make that motion. For Mr. Orlando. To be a solicitor for Robinson Township zoning here and there.
You have a second.
He's been dead.
So, hear me out.
I'll do it.
Roll call, Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Vote no.
I'll vote, yes. And we have. Peace act, we have the two thousand forty-five peace ask convention, we have. Brody Duncan, Tandy Duncan, Tandy, and it could be Duncan, Tandy, Duncan.
Before we even go through that, how's everybody's schedules?
Uh, it's. We can still vote, if you don't go, you don't go. I mean, still pick somebody, and if the schedule isn't allowed.
What is it this year?
That's why I was asking.
I, I, I apologize, I should have.
Well, we'll find out. Yeah, I think.
It's only, yeah, totally like. There are two days. Or traditionally, it's the same day as one more meeting, so that you go, you gotta.
Oh, is it?
A lot of times it is, and you have to go, and then.
It overlaps, you just start on a Sunday and runs through on Wednesday, Thursday.
And normally, whatever little week is the meeting date.
Well, we're waiting for. Who's the point of date? Quick question, anybody going to the farm show? We were asking the farm show, and then. That's why I was asking, if anybody else is going. Okay. Thanks.
Make four seven this year, quite twenty-five.
Yeah.
Uh, so that we can go and check against the schedule. The workshop is actually the eighth this year, so it would.
Doesn't affect any meeting.
It would not.
Is that Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yeah, usually.
Yeah.
Usually Sunday's a half day, and then usually Wednesday's a half day.
Does anybody think they can go?
I'm sorry. You guys, you guys figure it out. Uh, my schedule can work around whatever.
I can't say we're in the office.
I was gonna say, we're for like five months out, so. Do we want to just?
This year, we have, we want all these out years, that's a good thing this year.
Thought you were.
Yeah, because they don't have the chairman stuff. Maybe I would just do the same thing, so voting, everybody, everybody else could be intending, could you?
Yeah, that sounds right.
So, I'll just make a motion, I'm voting, everybody else is intending, and that's my motion.
I'm gonna, that's reasonable, it's that way for whoever needs to go.
All right, do you have a second?
I'll make that second.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Oh, yes. All right, you see, for the planning commission, there's a couple individuals, freshman, Henry Ramsey, that has to be reappointed, so anyone like to make a motion to appoint, reappoint the individuals as listed.
Do not individually, please, Mr. Chairman?
I mean, for a four-year term.
All right, well.
I'll make a motion to do, um, point.
Second that motion.
All right. All right, roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Gallow, yes. All right, then we have. Henry Ramsey on the list of appointing. Anyone like to make a motion to appoint, reappoint, Henry Ramsey?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call. Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Is there a reason you want to separate them?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote no.
He's gonna vote no.
It's time to get some change, though.
No, I'm just curious. Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
No.
Oh, yes. All right, and we have.
N C P, Miss Collins, a five-year term to the Gaia.
Or. And we'd like to make a motion to appoint Nancy. Put back to the board for five-year term.
I'm gonna make that motion to appoint Nancy Eaton back to the Gaia board for five-year term.
Seven, the motion.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Gallow, yes.
Or number sixteen, do you not currently have anyone listed for appointing reappointment?
Okay. Now, there's only one on that board, too.
There are, but nobody's expressing their just, at this point in time.
All right, then the E A C, there's Kate Kenny. Ed Scott and Andrew Manon, one there for reappointment. Anyone like to make a motion for their appointment slash reappointment, E A C?
I'll make that motion.
Term.
All of them are fired.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Edman Scott.
And Ray Manon. Second. Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
And we're on which one?
Yeah, E A C.
The E A C, right.
Yes. Yes.
Gallow, yes. And we have the board of auditors.
Which we, we should not, this should have been eliminated from here, they are in elected positions, so they would not be.
You can wear that if you did the park and rec. All right, now we got. Work by CPA. You know, we're having one for it.
There's only one.
At twice the cost of where, is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, let's table that and look for somebody else.
We're likely to resend, resend that out in our R P.
And then, how quickly do you want to use someone?
I think it probably's gotta be done by June.
We don't need to decide that tonight.
I just wanted to know if we would put a Ted.
You know the language could take a long time.
It does take a long time, and you get them settled as well. They can apply for an extension to D C D, uh, but it's painful if we get too long.
All right, open up.
I appreciate it. Put it out again. My R P.
Red, a little bit, a little bit emotional, too. To read.
Here, just.
No, just because telling you to do it normally.
With this, with it, in the world.
Yeah.
Just to re-advertise that special program.
If they're twice as much, with what we pay for all the events, you can almost hire somebody who worked on it. Yeah, but if I come, we, we gotta pay four grand.
We're working individually from that, but.
Four or five, yeah.
Four or five grand.
No, maybe you will get a auditor to do some of this work.
Uh, when I don't think any of our auditors are CPAs.
And that's a big problem.
I believe one of them is, but I'm not positive. He may have, he may have dropped it.
I mean, he has dropped it, if he has at any point in time. Um, Mr. Peters is not, he, he does I T work, uh, as an I T auditor. He's not aware of any, has any background in auditing, so.
All right, then we got the. Treasures bond. Um, we're going to make a motion to set the treasury bond for two million dollars.
I'll make that motion, since it's fairly important, and we all need to have this kind of bond on.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
All right, who is Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Oh, yes.
Gallow, yes. All right, you know, it's. Resolution. Any resolutions?
Okay, so this first resolution will be township B schedule. This would be resolution twenty-five dash zero one.
Any comments before? Obviously, Arrow, you have a question, comment?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we as the public have no information, so I had to find it, compel to answer a question. In the past, we've always gotten.
There's a fee schedule out here.
Where? Not on the website. Not here.
I'll find one and send you a link.
Last year.
There's one out there, well, we didn't.
But it hasn't been adopted yet.
Yeah.
How would the public make a comment? It's incredible.
Yeah, but it should still be out there from last year if we didn't change it.
But you aren't changing it.
Yeah, but we have it yet, so how can you advertise something you have it?
That's incredible.
Okay, listen, I'm gonna do a big debate here, but I think we want to look at the national budget before it's advertised or approved. I don't know why we can't see the stuff as a township.
But we're, we're bound by second-class rules, it's not.
The stuff that says you can't see.
Well, like I said, as far as this.
But anyway, my question is, in the past, we've always tried to get the alternate and the regular guys to match prices. So, if we're using Technicon for sewage enforcement, and we're using S D E, we try to get them to match the same price, so that we weren't playing a game with our residents, oh, if you use this guy, you're gonna pay ten dollars more. Do, do we do that?
Fee schedule.
Fee schedule is critical, and it's critical because this is what gets passed multiple residents. We haven't done, in my opinion, the job to control this fee schedule. We haven't answered the questions, we've been jammed up with time a few days before we get a revised agenda, after a number of my colleagues objected to the other agenda. This is jammed in here, and any, any, it, it's not good business at all.
Do we realize how much time we waste by not looking at things and just reading instead of criticizing everyone and everything? Be part of the solution, not the problem.
You have three days to look at something.
Yes, Chris.
Essentially in its final form. Joy, you don't even understand what we're talking about. We're talking about putting this stuff out on the website, getting the public to know what's going on. Not, not saying we'll show you after the fact.
I'm not, I'm a lucky person.
No, we'll show you after we do it.
Says the person who doesn't read emails respond or.
You don't know what someone reads and don't read.
You know.
Okay, so, so I just don't understand what your problem is. This fee schedule is not in the best interest of the taxpayer and residents. There's, there's a question. Do you, do you, do we see the sole, do we see the solar increase?
Do, do any of us see the positive background of any of this?
The significant increase in solar, and there's a reason for that. So, this is not, is not in the best interest of the residents.
Uh-huh.
Not.
I know, you, you've done so well for our residents previously, Mr. Bittler. He has such a big heart for them.
See, we do agree on something, I think I have done well.
Yeah, I think I certainly did for the pain.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna.
I'm sure they won't agree with you, but that's okay.
Certainly not gonna vote for that fee schedule.
Do you plan anything?
No.
Yeah, exactly. Well, it's the same. It's the same, it's the same thing that we kind of do. And unless their fees go up, there's no reason to put our fees up for, you know, residents. Because technically, breaking even is about all we do on these.
I think Ryan made the comment they just go by, um, two, three percent.
Right, well, basically, two, three, three percent is basically a cost of living increase, so how do you fault that one? When we're nobody putting them up. Chris, we have the, we have the ability to modify this fee schedule throughout the year, right? So what is the harm in taking what's here? Unless we get larger bids from it, larger expenses from it every moment, there's not really a point. No, I can't argue that, but. Well, we haven't actually appointed those people, so how do we know where the fees are, you know?
The fee schedule is what they're gonna pay.
I know that, but as long as the fee schedule tries to compensate for what our costs are, so that we're not paying out the fortune for it. You know, that's why, that's why I said we haven't even kicked these people yet, everyone, so. That's what your Peter's doing.
Look, yeah, you were your point at each point.
What?
You were your point at each point.
Okay, let's talk with the feral cat caregiver. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's difficult, but I kind of looked at that went, um.
I don't believe that was in last year.
It was not.
I don't think this group would like. Well, I guess there's a point for it, that if we, I think we have them permitted, that they're taking care of the cats. We already went through the feral cat nightmare before.
Yeah, look, if that's the case, that's too cheap.
Yeah, I know, I was thinking the same thing, that which is really good. But then they just won't tell us they're doing it, and they'll do it anyways.
That was bullshit, we had to say.
It's not gonna happen.
We'll call Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow. We'll vote no. Mr. Rhodes?
I'm also in a.
Mr. Bentley? I'll vote no. Sure, I'll vote yes. We, uh. Make this up for now, or is it for Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday or Tuesday.
Leave the other one in place until some time. Would you like to do it for Thursday, or would you like to put it on for Tuesday the twenty-first, because you're, it'll be gonna happen.
Oh, yeah.
Tuesday.
Well, it happens to this week, you can, unless we come one more time.
Well, wouldn't the other things just roll over?
That's still your.
It's still valid, right?
Yeah.
Takes some time for it to.
Do it in the right, right in the meeting.
Let's do it in the right room.
More. One of the vendors decides they don't like that, they'll make up a arrangement, but they're fine. But their fee schedule, it's not.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright, then we got the next resolution, if we're gonna do this one. CPA to setting all accounts that you have to school here.
I think we can hold on that then.
So alright, since we done, so regardless, sure, when we do, it's gonna be twenty-five dash year one.
Correct.
Alright, so now we got the, we can make a motion to implement the requirements of Act Fifty-seven.
Just a reaffirmation here.
I think we, resolution twenty-five dash year one. We'll call Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Next one would be make a motion to, we can make our resolution, and this would be twenty-five dash year two. To include the township in your salary.
Why don't we hold that till after our turkey session on Tuesday? I've not seen logic in this.
I agree. Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, because I mean, regardless, it would be what our manager to make, who we're here to who we're managing, right?
No, not necessarily.
Unless we get some fancy person from DC.
You keep saying that repeatedly, but let's take, let's take a look at a man's job and pay him what he's worth if he's qualified from the get-go. Let's look at those. We can do that as we always suggested.
So our last year was seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight.
Correct. This year, what I was looking at was taking township's insurance, family insurance, which is thirty-six. That puts it at one fourteen, but I propose instead, we stay at one oh five and not take the family insurance, because I believe that the things that I'm looking for in that insurance can be found less expensively elsewhere.
She's technically responsible with the township's money.
Yes, well, maybe ten thousand dollars essentially less than it would be to take the township's insurance policy.
Governor paid out for not taking insurance for it.
Compared to your budget, it's a lot.
We still have some qualifications, we still got to hold up job performance.
Which you find public fault in. Me either.
And that wouldn't be pending any, any raises that you might consider on, you know, on that seventy-eight plus the thirty-six, so.
Our budget approval was the hundred and five, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It was only a budgeted amount, Chris, not, not an approval, we had budgeted amount for other employees we never hired. Just because it's in the budget doesn't mean it needs to be expended.
We know that.
Particularly as times change.
Which is why things get moved around in the budget, that's how you manage a budget. No, you have to manage.
That's what he said. Yeah, because it's there, it needs to spend it.
I didn't say that, yeah, but you're managing it, but you still have to offer someone a fair salary. Make any use of the salaries around the county, and you guys will get a better idea.
Didn't have much opportunity to discuss this during the budget process. We did look at the other manager salaries in the area, the average of twenty-five. I did consider my experience in regard to that. Uh, in many other locations, they also do match the chief of police, which we obviously did not do here. Uh, it's still substantially below that, so just for your consideration. The chief of police has a contract, and the chief of police has a contract, his salary is negotiated in that contract.
Yes.
Along with pay raises.
Not done like this.
Yeah.
You need a contract, and then we get into the whole, what the bargaining. Okay, so, so we're trying to set the salary without a contract.
Chief would not be part of the contract.
Well, question is, are, are we in that currently? You're, you're trying to make a chief's salary without a contract to someone who's, who may or may not be, I don't know, may or may not be in the, not that I've seen.
No, sir, it's, it's below the, the chief's salary substantially.
That was a statement.
Alright, do we wanna, do we wanna then also add twenty-four to the regular then?
I guess, we're getting drawn to that.
You mean twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
The manager.
The number.
The number.
Number.
No, no, agenda.
On the agenda.
Not, not those.
We're talking about twenty-five as well.
Well, yeah, we're, we're.
Yeah, so twenty-four.
We'll get there.
Discussing.
Twenty-four, yeah.
If you want to do that.
Yeah, twenty-four at the regular.
And then twenty-five.
And the twenty-five, same. Which will be the chief's salary.
Reliable.
The lobby, lobby dealing.
So it's that two.
You don't have a contract for anyone, so how can you set that number?
So I just gotta have the right. Right, right, right.
This one, a positive pension funds, which would be resolution twenty-five dash year two.
This was something that was recommended by our solicitor. Again, positive pension funds is just a resolution, seems to be positive, in our case, for the general fund, we have both this. Yes, yeah.
Make a motion to approve adopted resolution twenty-five dash year two.
Make that motion, we got some.
You have a second?
I'll say it.
We'll call Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Now, our agenda, that puts us, the organization from the four, this is down the five, we're down the back. Remember, if other business is necessary, we should discuss them before chief. Discuss that.
I would, uh, like to make a motion to authorize our solicitor to begin construction of a contract uh, for chief of police with the intention of hiring acting chief as the department's chief. I believe that's the way to start.
I second that motion.
Discussion, the second discussion, Scott, what happened to, let's, let's look for the best available candidate, not to suggest that he's not.
That wasn't, your discussion, mine was, I wanted to give, I wanted to give Jason time. I wanted to see, which has been since.
So how do we know, how does this board know today we have the best candidate?
Because Chief Castle built a good group of men to lead this township and protect this township.
So you made a motion, we then didn't file through with the motion, and now we're just, we're rambling.
The motion died. It died, it was never made, Mr. Bentley.
But let, let me, Eric, since I made the motion, I will, I will answer that question, so.
Sure.
That's my opinion on, on doing this right now. Personally, I believe that, that Jason is the right choice for this township. I probably work, talk to him more than anyone else in this board for the most part, being on the street. I, I've seen him, I work with his officers at the same time. I didn't interview them, but I can read people, I, I can read the morale of the department. I have also personally been approached by, I will leave it, a chief of a neighboring, to very neighboring department that asked me why he wasn't chief already, and gave him a glowing recommendation. So, my point from the beginning was to start the process short, um, but we put Jason as OIC, and then I made the motion to acting chief, which he's been in. I have not one negative piece to, to add in, or has been brought to me by a member of the public, a member of the department, or a member of the neighboring department. So, that's why I'm making.
And I'm seconding the motion for exactly what Scott said. Everything I've heard from the community, the people who worked for him and with him, meaning other members of the fire companies, not just Gutter Town or, you know, Gibraltar, but neighboring ones. So, there's a lot of respect there from the community and from the people who worked with him, so I think that speaks for itself.
Y'all knew my stance from the beginning, so.
Yep.
I'm never understood that stance, Mr. Rhodes.
But you've been consistent. Very consistent. Consistent, not gonna, a lot of that.
Although I'm dying to find out an answer, when you always say you hire within, what happens if there is nobody? What do you do then? I would suggest you go out and get some.
Well, then you would, if there's nobody from within.
This board has not done its due diligence, and it's frankly not fair to you, my friend, it's not fair. You haven't, in my opinion, hasn't earned it.
Excuse me?
Okay, you, you can do a good job, this board has a duty, we have a duty to the taxpayers, it's not personal, it's not, we haven't had, what is the act? Is it Act Fifty-seven?
We do RFPs.
We should have a, a discussion.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I have a question, if we do, so you wanna do RFPs to have other candidates come in, but you can claim that people don't believe he's done a good enough job yet, how do you know if they're gonna?
I didn't say he hasn't done a good enough job, we as a board haven't decided whether there's anybody better out there, and we should at least entertain that.
Your words were, he hasn't proven himself yet, how is someone you've never seen work in this township prove himself to you, better than what you have sitting right there?
We don't know what candidates would possibly apply, we haven't done all the checks that we need to do. That's my position, do you have a motion, I'm second.
So now, just to. I disagree, but that's not, that's not. I, I, just to finish my statement, is, is, I believe the correct process would be to engage our solicitor to begin a contract construction, I think we have a contract tablet from the previous chief, obviously it's not gonna be cloned. Um, and, and, and then we authorize that, we get it as the supervisors review, make changes, once we approve that contract, it will be then presented to Mr. Rimby and his camp to talk, and at that point, I think, uh, I think the best scenario case is, is, we can't go a meeting to a meeting, we have to for decisions, but I'd like to, maybe, I'm just talking ahead, you know, Chairman Smith as the liaison to the board, if he, if Jason has a copy of what we approved, and he has a question, a comment, hey, hey, what do you guys think, you know, he can speak to the chairman, chairman can shoot it off to us, at least you're not gonna delegate debate, talk, but think about it for the next meeting, just trying to not make this be April, May, June, till we get something.
No, I agree with you on that.
But we can fine tune that, but that is the.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
No.
Rich, can you?
Hey, I will reach out to our solicitor for that, and I will, our way. Would you have a solicitor?
I committed to go get.
No, I felt that, it got cold, it's on that hot pole, it balances seventy-five.
See him right there.
Can you handle the regular meeting in July?
It was getting cold back there.
Yes, sir.
Do it for Tuesday, Rick.
Right, right, Tuesday, so you went out for the regular meeting, the RFPs?
Yeah.
And also, would you like Jones to have an update on a, on a contract for those?
If she has one.
Okay, she has one.
If she has.
Yeah, and they'll, right, understood.
I have a miss.
I even like to make a motion to adjourn at eight zero three. That motion, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
One favor.
Fine.
Can you just want to get back to the.
Sure.
Hell, she's here.
Rich, I have about five hundred of these.
We bring them back. The whole day, you wanna strand the gathering.
I did, they're sitting, my wife, they're sitting down in my basement for the carpet, and she goes, I'm trying, why are these sitting? I just take them off, I'm from home, I'm trying.
So I have all of my car.
What are you doing, signature?
Yes.
A couple guys.
Oh, and then I said, you will sign it, so you will.
So it makes it fun.
Oh, Scott, Scott.
It's my job, yeah, same here.
Hey, Scott, when you sign, you'll sign the tag.
A lot of guys will sign the tag, well, I saved my tag about one or two this year. He's having a problem every day, during the day, like sometimes three hundred. I wish you should try it when I was younger.
Okay.
Because I just, it's nice to use. You watch football, what do you watch?
I don't know the hell.
Player works throughout, slaps a player in the head, and that, and that. I don't know what the line is. Really, really intense.
Oh my god.
Traditional. We used to have a lot of fun, like I remember when Aquari used to.
Yeah, go to acting chief, yeah.
Did you see on Aquari? And I still remember there being like twenty forty shot. We have one here. The other twenty-five were misses or whatever it was, but it was a good time. Oh, congratulations on all your work. We got you.
Would you like John to go to the basis to put up?
Harold, this is your death row suit, because you don't sound good, so.
I don't read death row suits, stay back, there was a German.
I tried to stop.
You, you didn't get one, or I'm gonna kill you.
I remember, I kept playing them. I just went, goes away.
That's where the pot stories come up, for basically. There were two copies, I said two copies stored, yeah.
You remember this five hundred? It's supposed to be like the highest rate speed. That's the instruction. And there was a recall, like I guess. You know, a hundred fifty thousand or something, um, but I just sent it back to Reagan, and I.
A little bit, it's not that far.
Honestly, with how popular they are.
I believe it, you know what I mean, like they want to do customer service, I think their products are not cheap.
That's one Terry Whitehead. I have, I have one, I have one from the sleep, it has sleep, but it has the scene, yeah. A hundred, a thousand.